Isaiah?
Yes.
I have to vote for both of you, but would you guys all stand and pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America?
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
To the United States of America, into the Republic of which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Motion to approve the agenda? Who first? Sam?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes, March 10th, 2014.
So move.
Isaiah was first.
Reports, I do have one thing, I'd like all of you to track down for the employee handbook and manual. On the employee handbook and manual, please, if you have your suggestions, recommendations, comments, complaints, please email to Mark or I, preferably by April 1st, that way the board can start getting the agenda set in April and May, so that we can act on it by June, so that the whole next season, we don't have to worry about until the next April and May, the next updates. So that's kind of the thought process, so if you would, please email me or Mark, and we'll get them going. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
So going back to that, so that's where the wiring, but because we're not wiring, the elementarys like the middle school, high school, that's why the middle school, high schools are getting additional mobile labs to meet that.
Was there, I have just a quick question. Was there ever a thought to do maybe the gym and the library and then maybe like the science wing rather than the cafeteria? Just, I mean, I understand the maximum capacity and get that, but you know, I just, I guess I don't see the...
It's commonality, it's a good question. Understand for the middle school, high school, it may look different, so that's the other part, we're even getting the mics. Those are the three common areas that we can do in all the buildings. Now, in the middle school, high school, we're pulling six wires per room, and we've got that spec for the elementarys. So the moment we're ready to go, it's to the board and, you know, recommend and approve. So we have it all specced out for all the buildings. So it still goes back to capacity and equity also. So with the middle school, high school, we'll pull up naturally because of the bigger sites or specifically for games and all that, we're running 10 wires to our more big areas out here, just because each hotspot can only handle so many devices. And when you think one-to-one, two things have to happen. It requires more wiring first. The second part is, it's usually not one-to-one, it's three-to-one, because a lot of students will have their laptop and their phone, and they're both going to bounce. So, you know, they're both going to try to log on. In the middle school, high school, our goal is to implement and to try to get wireless throughout both of the buildings. It's just how to roll it out. The infrastructure things that we don't see are the closets. Like if you went into this technology closet, they actually have a switch on top of the rack. We need one more rack, for example, there. So we need racks, switches, and hotspots. And that's what the hotspot's going to look like, actually, that is a hotspot. So we are going to roll that out, and so our goal is to be wireless in this environment. And then, you know, then we're compensated with the mobile carts in the other places. And we will attempt to bring in, you know, maybe one more cart. I know there's, you know, need and access, you know, what type of wireless carts would we bring here too, but because this building's being wired, then, you know, we're just trying to create the equity there. So I hope that answers the question. But again, this is not going to be, you know, we also have to set it up, you know, we have to make the decision of going guest wireless, which will run on a separate server, and then we will have, if you will, you know, Wisconsin heights. And this is where we have to develop our policies and protocols to how that happens. You know, it's not going to be, don't think of this wireless environment like here, or at home. I mean, your wireless environment at home has a capacity of about five devices, and you know, and we also have to have security here for the things that run, and we'll wire that accordingly. So, for example, though, we may, based on interest, or, you know, let's say the high school says, yes, do high school first, I mean, science first, because they use technology and everybody agrees upon that. That could be understandable, but you know, we just want to roll it out eventually. So. Any questions about that announcement?
Could we, could we at the next staff meeting or something like that, just see if there is a common idea, a common thought, what we think?
I guess it could be for information gathering, but right now, we're not ready to ask that question. We just got approved on what we can get in. And so what you'll see, and we can start doing this right away, we will, the wires will be pulled this spring, and so then it's, what can we get done this summer? You know, just as I talk about the six ports, it's not that you're going to have six ports in every room, but it's as needed. Why? Because it costs just as much money to pull one wire as it does six. The labor, you know, you pay a difference of the cost between one and six wires, but you know, the greatest cost is the labor there. So other communication questions, comments? You know, we've shared the Mezzo, Mezzo's written comments from a couple weeks ago, or emails, a couple emails. We should be getting the board meeting minutes, I approved them today, so at least we'll send this out probably tomorrow.
Where was that first screen that you were looking at?
This is, this is...
That's for Mezzo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just pass out a survey to see what everybody had asked and what they wanted us to bring? It's like, that was just a community issue.
It's good, sorry.
What?
Okay.
Hold on.
Black Earth has someone saying, sorry.
One of the things that I don't think is on there is, with the building updates, the elementary schools, we know what's going on in each of the two buildings because we share announcements and things like that, but I have one who was going on in the middle school, high school, and things like that. I mean, it could be events that are happening, it could be student recognition, different things like that.
Do you guys know about paintball?
No.
I know Ann Hartlock's looking for staff members. Asta has that nice weekly update that she gives out.
I guess I'll...
And that goes to, I mean, it's as simple as putting it to district instead of 612 and every other command.
Yeah, oh no, I mean...
Communication.
Then you can see...
They're going to level this up.
Yes, yes.
District wide.
So is that something that we could start now that the morning announcements that we have, Mezzo, Black Earth, and this may be too much, so I'm just asking?
It's just one announcement for most of us.
Okay, so two, so two of you, one additional email, I'm just quantifying it. Just so instead of sending to your staff, send it district, have the secretaries of administrative assistants send it district wide?
You're talking about announcements, daily announcements?
Well, I haven't...
Oh, I've done the weekly update.
I think the weekly update.
The weekly update and the announcements are two different things.
Yeah, because you don't want to hear our announcements.
You don't want to know that the army's coming next Tuesday.
Do you?
Maybe.
Well, maybe you want to know.
Yeah.
Which do you guys want, the weekly update or the daily announcements?
I think you, I think you would...
Because you can have either one.
The weekly update would be what you want to see. You get a rundown of what's going on next week, day to day, it's wonderfully done.
Although you will also get all that information of Austin's is coming for the seniors tomorrow.
Right, well, right. But that's... No, it's not that one in the middle.
Or your parents.
So what would that look like, elementary coming to secondary?
We don't have that, we have the announcement.
Well, I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, will you type, what email, how does she type in? You know, Austin's, I get Austin's every Friday, my college, I think it comes from my school email, but, you know, life is a point, she's a parent, it's a lot. So it's similar to my elementary update, but in Austin's very consistent, I mean, I get fired like awkward.
So all buildings send weekly updates district wide? I mean, I'm just...
I mean, that's information that goes out, it's a fact, we have a huge deal, it's just a matter of who needs, letters to take, seasoning, type in, you know, exactly.
Well, it makes sense, it allows the, the different, the elementarys and the secondaries to be able to communicate, and that's a good way to do it.
Other communication things. I mean, the website, do we want to talk about that? Do people think each staff member should have a website for each classroom?
I think the districts should have one.
I should pick one?
I'm sorry.
Can you guys just have grade level or subject websites that were linked?
Starts with the district and then follows up this way, you know, the teachers have an opportunity to, you know, let me create their websites, how does that?
High end.
How does that all tie in? It's a big communication aspect, you start up here.
We've been rehabbing, we have another one, you've seen it internally, I'm told that it should come out, but we're also having some IT problems. We purposely hosted the website outside, and there's two glitches that they haven't fixed.
It's like, I just disappeared.
Oh yeah, because right now, when you click, when you go onto it, it's a different...
I don't understand.
It used to be kind of pretty, you always see inside.
Oh.
But it changed, you know, it's like, we get into web space.
I haven't, I haven't seen...
But that's because you do it someday, to get ready.
Yeah, well, there's two issues that we're having, and it's just updating, but yeah.
So you're saying each grade will have a website, the first grade website?
As a parent, I would refuse that one.
So you're not seeing this?
No.
Oh, I do.
Really?
I still see this one too, but when I log on to like an L C computer sometimes, sometimes you have a...
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I haven't seen any different. Okay, thanks, yep.
The one I see is blue, and it's all just...
And it's white.
All of those elements all from the, down to one side.
And everything, it's just one of the hallways on the face, yes.
Are you using it?
Yes, yeah.
Has something changed in all of us, that this, you know, this is probably different?
Yeah.
I missed you.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking at the one, like here, it's not showing up, but there's a gap between student parents and family access, and the only way you can make it work is if you do something with them, so it's just not, that's the way. So it's been a big disappointment, that's the way.
I know, it's a set person, it's a challenge, it's not easy to do, so I'm kind of personal.
But, yes.
I think it means a lot to have, to have them a helpful, attractive, easy to navigate site.
Is it, is it true that the old site is still, one that's still accessible from outside of the district?
Correct, yeah.
And that's one of the other glitches, that's a glitch maybe?
Well, the glitch with the current, the one that goes outside, is that under that format, it's dependent, and this even started happening in Ohio when the state went to, the volatile team went to state, it depended on what browser you have and what version. And so I continually, or people will say, hey, I clicked on your, this is an old browser or an old update, but the browser detects an old webpage where there is a bad link to my email, and so people will call me and say, I can't click on this, and it's a browser issue on their end. And that's one of the bigger frustrations with the website, so that's why we went for the hosted website, and then it just...
It solved the problem.
Well, it's just not, well, it's not active, that's the problem. And I've talked to some school districts, they've agreed that their website update takes up to two years, and you know, we've been working on it for a little more than that, but it's, some days I wish we just went to something a lot simpler. I think if I'm looking backwards or hindsight 2020, we still try to make this too much like the old one. We reorganized it, and I don't want to, if I'm talking too much, I'm going to stop real quick. We tried to put too much information into it, and that's made it more difficult to start. That's the way to go. But, yes.
I want to take a step back for communication, if you don't mind, and talk about the interaction that just kind of happened in the beginning, which was, how do we get our rationales for the decision we make to be, kind of like that transparency thing I saw in the, how do we make those more transparent? Because when we did, like when we just approved that, which is really great, and when we approved the wifi, and it was in those larger areas, how do we say why we did it for the larger areas? Because I got what you're getting at, Mark, and I knew why we were doing it, but how do we get those rationales down to the appropriate people so they understand why we're making those decisions? And/or what is the conduit for us to have those conversations, besides maybe this is wrong?
Yeah, I mean, we can, and this is the balance, and it's a good question. And I can require Lisa to write, you know, what she, what you see on approved, that those are legal, that's legally written.
Right.
And so in order to do that, and this is the challenge, and, you know, again, it can be done, and I've been in districts when it was more paper driven, but I'm not saying we need to do that, but the unofficial minutes, the information were one color and the official were another color. And so the key, the challenge is not to confuse the unofficial minutes with the regular minutes. So that's, that's the balance. We could ask, the other thing, if you don't know it, and if you'd like me to have Lisa send it out, we are uploading all the board meetings on YouTube now, so you can watch them from your home.
I saw the channel, yeah.
Yep, you know, there, it takes, this is where we've just got to somehow catch up right now, it takes about a half day to upload a two-hour meeting. And our upload speed's good, but it's just, you know, we'll get better at it, so it's not going to be, we're not into simulcast, but our other commitment to get information out, so you get it in, you can see people talk, if you will, is we've got it on YouTube, and that's, that's the other thing that we've done. That's about six weeks in.
Plug in headphones, because then it's clear as hell that you're just trying to listen.
Yeah, this is, that, that camera's meant for...
Closer up.
Well, no, 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 it's, no, it's set up for headphones.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, as far as the information on how we decided, I think the upper board decided, and maybe how to break out, you know, this first phase, second phase, third phase, in the facilities committee, because I think we, I remember conversations and saying, how can we break this out and spread it out?
You guys...
And what happened to be first, what happened to be second?
Oh yeah, no, I agree with the rationale, I'm just wondering how those become, for the people who are showing up, or who have other things to do. Yeah.
In other words, how more each committee, as a committee, get that out.
Right, yes. Same with policies, things, everything, same with all of them, you know, I mean, that's...
How do we get the commentary is the word. How do we get the, yeah, ideas? The discussion are ideas. The ideas, the discussion behind, the dialogue behind ideas.
I'm assuming that Lisa's sending out all the committee notifications so that you guys are all seeing that, so you're always welcome to come to those.
Please come to those.
Yes, please.
If you have something going great in your class, come sign in for the public portion and say, hey, this is what I'm doing, we'd love to hear from you.
Oh, seriously? You do that? Thank you.
I feel like, my initial thought on how you could do that was you just, I mean, send an email, because people read their emails, but then, you know, getting the right wording in there so that the board members feel like their ideas were articulated properly and would maybe be a hassle. I mean, what if, what if, you know, one of the board members just reached out and said, you know, I was at the meeting, I heard the other, you know, what was said, and, you know, if, you know, if you have any questions, you know, I'll be stopping by this day or something that, you know, at the end of school or something like that, so we can talk about it for 10 or 15 minutes, you know? That way, so that way you're talking to a person, because I mean, no matter what you would put in an email, people would read into it and say, well, why didn't this happen? Or why didn't this happen? And, you know, things like that, I mean, I feel like there wouldn't be a great way to communicate it electronically, personally, and, you know, unless you're having, you know, you have a court reporter typing out the words.
Well, that's, that's the concept behind it, in fact, that's another reason why board minutes are not approved to the next meeting. And so it's because, you know, the question to the board every meeting is approval of the previous meeting minutes. So nothing's official until they vote it on a second time. You know, if you're, how should I put it? There's only real two spokesmen for the board, and that's the board president and the superintendent. I mean, everybody can talk, but in terms of an agent of the board, these are, these are the only two people. And it's not that, you know, Isaiah, you know, not, it's not saying don't talk to Isaiah, but in terms of explaining board action, everything, that comes from the president and the superintendent. And I'm not trying to get into formalities, perspective.
What about, what about, and I have no idea, maybe not, but your idea and your idea gave me an idea, what, if, there were things like this, but affect everybody, okay? Because like, everybody's so anxious to have internet access, right? But there's something like that, could there be an update that goes to the principals so that at the next staff meeting, they can convey the...
Sure. Announcement of major decisions.
Yeah, and then they can, they can explain the rationale, because they may are in person and it's...
Absolutely.
It's not bad, I think.
Or maybe if you get a, I mean, if big things come down too, Jeff, maybe you could send out an email, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, and I've thought with the idea of doing a video thing, and I, I was at a conference where I'll just do a video instead of writing something, say, hey, and I have it on it, but hey, I'd like to announce last night, this was approved, this is what it looks like.
Yeah, like, I think you, did you send it out, or somebody's, I can't remember who sent it, but that thing right before the, when we thought that the legislature was going to vote on changing the standards, there was that vote, or that video?
Yeah, yeah. It's the balance. To me, and this is the tough part, and this is where getting feedback's great, is not to do that too often, so that people say, oh, here's Mark, here's Mark again, I won't follow it for you, so this is good feedback for me in terms of funding for it, like major initiatives, I mean, is that, is that kind of what I get?
Yeah, yeah.
Or like a ask presidents letter, or the president's, ask presidents email out.
State of the Union.
I've never think my list.
A lot of it's so difficult because it's just hard to anticipate questions.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's almost impossible to anticipate people's questions, so just have some type of...
Well, even if he, even if you did something like that, and then, you know, clarifications can be brought to, you know, your principal.
Well, it's just, you know, if you've got a question, I always grew up, there was no dumb questions. If there was a question, there's something needs to be clarified, explained, whatever, just ask the question, and we'll try to find the answer. I think that's, that's what we need to see here in the district, is, hey, question you, you know, Kim, you know, what is this? And either Mark or I or Asta come back, you know? Like I said, it's, it's just a matter of asking the question and then being able to answer.
Because what, as I'm listening here, trying to get notes out and this out to people, it's just going to create, that note's going to create more questions, which is going to create more, it's just going to be an ever-ending...
Right.
Remember the first reaction? Kathy and, and me, and...
Right.
It's in the interviews, right?
Right.
At the gym and the cafeteria, like, you know, and then John at the other end of the building, you know? Everybody's going to be like, ah, you know, like, what were you guys thinking, right? And you were thinking, okay? So Isaiah's like, but we were thinking, so how can you get that out so that people don't get that first impression that is... What the heck? I think that's part of this committee, I mean, we're sitting and we're hearing what this board is going forward, so, and I mean, you know, we can, we can help communicate that too, and we understand they have explained it in here, you know? I mean...
Hopefully practice.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, part of it can be put on Asta, it doesn't always have to be on the administration. We want to be part of the solution.
Other thoughts?
Except my email, and I think all the board mail, members' emails, phones are, you'll three call, I mean, I can talk to you then, I'll talk to you later, you know, I'll make a question.
Did I do that right, Isaiah?
Yeah. That's better, that's good.
All right, yeah, I love it, that's the hard, that's the hardest spell.
I can also say, it's Angie, you and Angie, each, two of them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Maggie, Kathy, never.
Oh yeah, yeah.
It does that to me all the time. It's a less long, I should just keep your name. Yeah, because I need to have so many.
Other, other thoughts?
Parker and her children. We could have the bio list.
Sure, yeah. I'm trying to do it real fast, so I'll get a lot faster, but, yeah, yeah.
Sometimes there's a breakdown in communication when there's a group that needs to talk something and not all members are there to hear the information. And I don't know how to necessarily solve that problem, but not all of the people that need the information are told the information in the same manner, I guess.
So how to get out critical announcements?
Well, not even necessarily critical, sometimes it's just like...
When you say, when you say group, uh...
I would say maybe Dale Plison and myself and another staff member need information, only two of us are present, so sometimes a third person isn't always told the information we need.
At the same time, so my staff is extremely sensitive to that, so I have a situation, let's say, here's I have three staff members I have involved, I'll come in, I bump into Angie in the office, I'll tell her, hey, don't get to Dale till an hour later, by that time, they've told Sandy, that's an issue, because Sandy will say, well, why didn't you talk to me? My, my, that is a communication issue that I wrestle with, because I'm trying to, but that's where I see an issue at my level, and sometimes it's like, well, I wasn't, you all were going to find out, but I did not anticipate that.
You're a shitbag, I...
Well, and, you know, the last person to know is offended because, you know, well, he hasn't talked to me, and I'm just like, well, I haven't seen you yet.
Yeah, some of that's just a matter of people, yeah, right.
How do you, sometimes, how do you reserve judgment too?
Yeah.
I mean, I hear you, it's real, but, you know, so what?
So coming from my end... So coming from my end, sometimes I wanna say, hey, guys, you got public space back here.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I got my t, I got my tennis shoes on and running back and forth, and, you know, I'm not trying to offend, or, you know, Angie's not my favorite because I talked to her, I just happened to see her first. I didn't want to send an email, because I wanted to make sure such and such happened. And, um, but that has, I mean, truly, since I've gotten here, that has been a very difficult...
I don't know, Dale, I think that, you know, I, I put out all important and confidential information uniformly over the P A system.
Yeah, she's probably talking, probably David's talking, or Brian's.
So then everybody hears it all at once.
I, I, I just, I mean, truly, is that fair analysis?
That's exactly, because this just happened not too long ago, and the girl that was talking to me, she asked if I had heard, and I said, yeah, I heard, but I just consider it still a rumor, until Dale comes and says something, and then I said, it's really making me sad, upset, you need to talk to yourself.
And that's, that's part of the problem. That's part of the problem.
And truly, there are some in afternoons, I don't even get my computer plugged in, because they don't get turned on until, you know...
And, and that's, that's, that, I think, an issue, even out in the private sector, and I, we holler across the fields, and stuff, this is, it's the same way, sometimes one guy gets the other one, and the other one's a check. I don't know how you can solve that, really, I don't. That's, that's a challenge.
I mean, just trying to anticipate, you know, and I, and I do that as best I can.
Yeah.
And actually, sometimes my staff, they've been helpful, hey, make sure you go let someone so know right away.
Yeah, there you go.
But that has been helpful, because sometimes, because they know what will happen, is I go to my next thing, so, I don't know, and these two sitting next to me are gonna help it.
It's a, it's a relation, realization of your staff, understanding that you've got ten other things on top, two to take care of, you know, and, not saying you're doing, you know, but it's just that realization they have to understand.
I think that part of the responsibility, though, and I think most of the responsibility should be put on the staff to, to check emails diligently, you know, I mean, that's one way to do it, you know? I, I mean, I know it's different at, at the elementary level, you guys don't have four minutes every forty-five minutes, but, um, you know, if you, if you send out an email and you just, or just make it clear that every lunch period, right before you go, just check your email real quick, or, you know, or, you know, when the kids go for whatever special or something they have, I mean, you know, to check your email whenever you can, because I don't know how you would solve that, you know, or one person would really do that effectively, there's only so much that you can do, you know? I, I, I just make it a habit to check every, you know, every passing period, check email, you know, because I can go forty-five minutes without getting an announcement, or, you know, you could go a morning without getting an announcement, you know, and, you know, assuming it's not, you know, pressing for ten thirty or whatever, but I don't, I don't... I think it's more on, I think it's more on the staff than it is on, on the, you know...
You just understand, once again, like Kathy and I, last time, you walk around in my shoes and I'll walk around, so you understand that you're not doing it to look...
Right.
It's just, it just happens.
The understanding of situations, how, you know, people are...
Other communication ideas? Do you wanna end here, or keep going, we're at fifty-five minutes or fifty minutes? Well, I, I was, last time we said what, what would communication, what would be an action item, so, for the previous one, so, my question is, what's the action item for communication? That would be my question. I agree. We spent some time talking about it, so, um, I heard last time, what's one thing we'll do differently, or a couple of things that could do differently.
Long staff speak, get our emails, it's also...
Yeah. New, um...
Is it a pain for the school board to get emails from the regular students to, to help, I'd love to go see...
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see.
I never know about me, there's...
Unless it comes to my wife, my wife's newsletter.
They're always in the newsletter, if you...
Put you on the P T O list. So do P T O, but it's...
I don't see it.
Weekly updates.
So that's my wife, I'll double check her.
To all district staff. I think if you put, I thought if you do district staff, I told...
No, no, I don't get anything from them. Actually, I don't even get anything from us, so you...
Well, that's, they have been doing district staff, they've been doing six...
They have been doing six twelve, that's different. If they go district staff, you double check.
Yeah, I, I don't get anything from anybody, actually, to be honest.
Or use, or use the board of education. Just, that's probably the easiest way, put district staff and board of education.
Yeah, because, uh, that would...
Oh, hold it, yeah.
Board members be more, more in tune and stuff, because like I said, I, I have a hard time getting help, you know, with my job and stuff, and I know some of these guys who are doing, boy, a lot of times I don't read my emails till either four-thirty in the morning or five-thirty in the morning when I get up, or late at night when I go to bed, so, uh, that would be, uh, for as far as you guys coming back to the board, I think that would be very...
It's early, it's early, it's too early. Was that four-thirty in the morning? Do you set your clock forward?
Yeah, I set it backwards, I was like, hey, it's...
Eastern time.
No, sometimes I do, yeah.
Or, no, hold it, California. Other, anything else?
Okay, I'm sorry, slide up. So you're, you're asking expectations, weekly updates, buildings to...
I'll, I'll just read...
Okay, that's, okay, I have this one, okay.
Historically, my emails don't blow out every week, that's why I said Osta's the clock that I'm trying to... And I don't always have a lot of information to share, um, so, but I can do two or three a month.
Okay. Medium, you don't want... Hey, you don't wanna update if you...
I want people to read my emails.
Yeah, right.
So, um, and I always depress people that have kids in more buildings, they love Osta's announcements, they'd like to see one from where they tried it, too, but...
Yeah, I mean, I figure...
Same one I sent you last.
Well, that's it, because like I said, you didn't need to get...
Your different mechanism is that you have folders, and so there's...
Right.
There's a little bit, you know, that's the, that's part of the difference, and, yeah, I hear what Dale's saying, is you don't wanna put the same thing on Friday that was on the folder on Tuesday, which makes sense, yeah. Okay. Thoughts, seems like a natural ending point, so... And this, next, oh, April, why don't I have April? Is it April sixteen?
Yes.
That's next, next one. April. Yeah, I hope these come out.
Yeah. Close your meetings? Yeah, it's cross, fourth one.
We were talking about, I don't know, you were talking about, uh, school or classroom websites, did we discuss that?
No, we did not.
Okay.
I mean, would you like to? I don't, I'm not trying to block over, that's communication, yeah.
Okay, I will do that, like, at the next meeting or something, or something?
Or we can do it right now, what, should...
Well, I just, it's fresh, I don't know.
Do we want, so here would be my question, at the building level, do you wanna discuss what a classroom or grade level website would look like, and get feedback and bring that to the next meeting? We could, you know, it's hard for me to say that, the Spanish, you know, you know, part of the concept from what I, this is my impression, not here, but fifteen years ago, everybody thought about making a website, or ten years ago, there was that initial push. And then you started to see websites that had, visit Mr. Overly's, you know, Mr. Overly's classroom, Mr. Overly didn't do it, so there was no link. But Miss Haye liked doing it, so, okay.
I know what you're saying.
Mrs. Schamber would like to, you know, and so she did that, and so what's, you know, what's the mutual understanding, peer understanding? So is it a grade level website? Is it, you know, it's that kind, what are the, so that everybody, it's kind of what Dale's talking about, a little bit, with the weekly update, what's our base? What are the parameters so that everybody feels like, so if somebody doesn't feel like they're doing a website?
I did, it sounded like when you initially brought it up, that we were gonna discuss whether or not it should be required that everybody do it, is that...
Yeah, I think we'd need feedback from, yes.
When it was in, I think it came up in that survey that, that we brought back from our school, I think it came up, it was in a survey we brought back from our school, and it was by people who wanted to have, well, wanted to be given time and encouraged and technology to be able to accomplish.
And I'll, I'll, I'll also include and support needed.
Yeah, I, we were just kinda discussing that over on this, on the table, and there was a push, um, I used to do that, and then it seemed sort of, the need for it seemed sort of negated by Skyward, because parents can go on Skyward, check their students' grades, you know, check their stuff, we can mass email from Skyward, all that kind of stuff, so we just went through a three-hour set of meetings this afternoon on building websites, and in the hour and a half, I had to work on, just, I'm just learning it, right? I don't know anything, so just doing that hour and a half, I managed sort partially to one page.
Absolutely.
If you told me I had to do a multi-page website, I think my head might explode.
No, you should be, you should be throwing glass and projecting that, maybe, yeah, yeah.
That was...
Sure, yeah. Warning, first time.
I'll give you a shield, you know, yeah, I just don't know where I would find the time to do that if I didn't have, if I didn't, if I wasn't hold, let something else go.
Understood. And that's, and that's my question back of common expectations, or what is it, what is the base? And you've got some people that, you know, their free time is, their, their release is building these things, right? Other people, it may be more like purgatory, you know?
The other thing we should talk about when we, when we're figuring out, what we think about that is how to, how to make them useful or used, because I, when we were doing this, I was like, oh, this is great, and I could do this, and I could do this, and everything would be there. And then I thought, well, when I sent out a hundred emails to the parents asking about something that was really crucial with the class, and I got six replies, I really felt like I wasted my time, you know? And so how, how we can make it...
Right. What's the messaging? You know, hearing John talk a little bit this year, is the flip, how do you flip, how do you flip the messaging or you create the demand?
Yeah.
In, in a manageable way, because if you're sitting there responding to a hundred emails, your question is, okay, how can I get this information out? But hence, weekly updates, you know, that's how predictability for, for X, Y, and Z.
But I, I'll, give you a warning, because we've been developing our website at home, you know, when you're talking about responses back, don't expect a lot quickly, it takes, you gotta be patient, and I, we've, we've, over five years, it's taken a long time before we started getting a generation of, of emails and Facebook pages, whatever, all that, I don't understand all that, my wife and I takes care of that. But it takes a long time and a lot of patience before people really start doing...
And, and with, with Google Drive or Google Apps, the hope is, is that can simplify the work you're doing. It takes learning, but then it allows you to get your message out or get the interaction part, so, you know, for example, one of, just to share on the, what I've been trying to do with the educate, when I, when I create a list for things, now I'm using a Google Drive document, and if the admin team needs to know, I share it with them, and it's just updated real time so they can reference it, as opposed to, you know, they get the first email, they know they have it, but I'm not saying, oh, here's the update today, and I couldn't, big update, but, and those are the things that, you know, I try to hear people optimizing the Google Drive, that's, those are things that aren't working, but that takes time, absolutely.
Before we close, I have to, this is way off topic, I'm gonna need to change it, but after I came back from Dr. Soffin, I came to Wankey and stopped a place of business, and I just wanted to tell you what the proprietors told me, they said, oh, we just had some amazing kids, or we stopped in Heights, actually, in, and she said, we have lots of amazing, Heights kids come through, and she said, I wanna tell you they're the nicest kids around, because we don't have that here in Wankey. And I just went, oh, thank you, so, kudos to everybody, and your parents, everyone. She was just gushing, like, all nice to come back to us.
That's good to hear.
She has two kids.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next one is April sixteen?
April sixteen, yeah.
Yes, do I have a motion to...
Sure.
Isaiah?
Yes, I'll send a tweet to Jeff. I'll send you a tweet. People would, I would really, I can't wait till that comes up, that'd be gracious.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Yeah, they get it.
Okay, that's it, so...
Thanks for teaching me, that's great.
Yeah, no, thank you.